He was one of the guys.
Okay, it's 7:00 AM. And following meeting to order the flagging. Mike and you too, Mr. Grant.
My great allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Not a problem. Okay, the first order of business. Thank you for everybody for attending the board meeting here on February 11, 2025. The first, we have the consent agenda. We have the agenda for February 11, 2025. Meeting minutes for January 14. Financial report, revenue expenditure report, repayment bills. We do have one addition to the agenda. It's P, high-tech invoices, number 8155.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the one addition.
Okay, we have a motion to support to approve the consent agenda with the one addition to the agenda. Any comments? Ro call both.
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stowe, yes.
Okay, motion carries. For citizens' comment, residents can make a comment here. We do have another one at the bottom if you would like to have talked after me. Okay. Next one, new, old business, building department office refurbishment. We have not, as of this date, got any. We sent it out and had it posted in the paper to repaint the offices in the hallway and the older offices and put the doorway in the building department to the two offices. So I'd like the board's permission. I'm going to reach out to area contractors to see if you will to do this work for us. Does anyone have any? Okay, all right. Okay, next thing is the new business, 2025-2026 colorary budget.
So I did the preliminary budget and if you guys have any additions, corrections, want to discuss anything?
Yeah, there's, I asked Jennifer to add in some extra costs for a month. We have a medium-sized cupboard on Honeycutt Road that's going to be replaced and I'd like to tack one of the bigger cupboards and I'd like to knock out one of those for a year. So in about four years, we get them all done.
We don't have nothing on road millage to accomplish that?
What's that?
We don't have nothing out of the road millage that we're taking into accomplish that?
Well, then usually the road millage takes care of our basic road commission work order.
Yeah.
That should be fair.
And we use all of it up? Well, we do because these road commission orders right now total 266,000, as I said, $114,000. So on top of that, we want cupboards.
Yeah. We'll take it like it, but it's not feasible, it's not feasible, so.
So we have 266,000 of the work orders?
That's what it says.
Where's that? That accounts for what you asked for extra, that 266?
That's limestone wall, the chlorate going, that takes care of the township roads.
I know, but he wanted me to put extra in that. Is that including, like, is that the bottom line for the whole year?
No, because we also have, we'll be bringing up work order for ditching.
Okay, because if you look at the two accounts, 101, 101, 828, the road millage account. I have that budgeted for 175,000 for next year. And then the 101, 101, 830, I have that for 110,000. That's all we have for roads. And that includes, you told me to bump that up, that's what I bumped it up to.
Yeah, we had to take in the common also the extra cost of the increase in limestone.
But what I'm saying is you only have 285,000 set aside for the roads. If you have 266,000 here, where's the rest of the money going to come from for the rest of what we think that maintenance and whatnot?
Well, if we know when you improve the budget, we can get it.
Well, that's, we have to approve it next month. That's why I put this out here so you guys can look at it if you have, you know. That's why it's here. So I would look into that and see what you want us to do with it.
Sure, and there's some match money available out there in that, so.
But if we have to be, like, close, I mean, the rest of the point of the budget is to budget your money.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Cam?
Okay.
So let me know about the road commission, otherwise this is what will be for next month.
Yeah, we'll do it. Okay. If there's no further questions on the preliminary budget, budget amendments.
So it was supposed to be color copies. Because I would like to color post, you guys can follow along which accounts to go to. So you'll have to just bear with me. The first set is basically all the revenues. So we brought in more than what we budgeted for. So basically, I moved, I made what we are making to be, or what we're over to zero. So I added in, like, if you look at the first, what was it? The fourth account down, the other taxes, we're over, like, we took in extra. So we're over 6950. So basically, I added that to the abundant budget part. So then that'll be zero. So if you look at the spreadsheet that I did, all those first, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 accounts on the top were all, we took in extra than what we budgeted for. So I added that part into the revenue. So because we took in extra, I added in that amount to the maintenance and repair. So then that takes away some of what we owed on the maintenance and repair because we were way over on that because of the addition. Okay, so that's the first, the first section of the amendments, that first grouping. The second grouping is, we were over, we had money left in the pensions. So I took that out because I already paid all of what we needed to. So I took that extra out and divided it up amongst those next for the elections, the public utilities, the maintenance and repair, and the zoning board of appeals. So then if you look at the last column, that'll tell you what the ending balance is. So I left money in the public utilities because we'll still have DTE and whatnot, the sunco bill, and we might have to do a little adjusting next month too because I'm not sure exactly what they'll be. And then the zoning board of appeals, I left a little bit because I, just in case we have another meeting before the fiscal year ends. So that's the second grouping. The third grouping, I took the 20,000 from the budget contingency account and put that towards the maintenance and repair because we're still over in that one. The fourth grouping, we had some extra money left on the building official. I left some in there, but I took 3,000 out. And I took 4,000 out of the electrical inspector because we had a lot left in his too. And then I added that to the township social security taxes because we were short on that one. And I put in extra because obviously we have a couple more pay periods before the fiscal year. And then the last grouping, we're basically moving because when we did our addition, we knew we were going to do that. So we had to transfer money in from the general account. And that, that's the account, it's transferred from the general fund. So we've already done that, but on the budget itself, we didn't do that. So that's basically making good on those two accounts to transfer it. So we have 100,000 there and then the other 100,000 from that will go to the maintenance and repair.
Is there an account, 101, 101, 910?
Yes.
When do we expect to get notification of insurance premium hikes?
That's not the insurance premium, that's just the bonds.
That's just the bonds?
The 700, yeah, that's, because there's, there's you and me, that's just the bonds. So the insurance one is... Let's see, where is it? There's a separate account for insurance.
I just wondered when we get notification.
That's, our insurance renews in July. So that'll be the next, the next one. Yeah, we've already paid whatever we had seen.
I just wasn't sure if it ran through April or July. Okay.
Where's that at? No, that's just pension. I don't see it, but I know it's on here. Oh, it's, it's the one right underneath it, the 914 is the insurance.
Okay.
The 101, 101, 914, that's the, that's the regular insurance, yeah. Yeah, that's a year. So we spent 13,505 dollars for liability.
Okay.
So we won't find out what the hikes are until, you know, May or June, whenever they...
And we have not contracted out? We have not contracted out for this year's cemetery maintenance that happened? I don't think so, so we'll have to be looking at that. Okay, it's just a heads up.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions on budget amendments?
There has to be a motion to approve.
We need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
There's someone.
Okay, you have support.
I support.
We have motion support to approve the budget amendments, any other questions? Ro call both.
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stowe, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next one is road commission work orders. We have a page, limestone hall, 195,000, 137,60 cents. We're going to be doing east-west roads this year. We always alternate each year. The 730 limestone hall, that's where the road commission puts in 70% of township 30. That's used to do, like, troubled spots. We're going to be doing a air road. And then Dan Engels, our new area foreman, he was saying that the first two miles of Meljum Road on Green City Highway, he said that gets beat up a lot.
Well, any road, when you're coming off the highway and you're on a small acre and then you hit the dirt road, it always potholes down, so yes.
I would say, there's a couple things. One, that's by our limestone local roads, probably most heavily traveled. And two, those road millions that go ahead, they didn't work out as well as they thought.
I don't like the road millions.
Yeah, so it's just a troubled area, so I told the athletes.
We have to do that, the over, any, anytime you're coming off the overpass, you're going to have potholes right there, that's what we have to look out for.
So, okay, we have the chloride for 53,000 on 492,084 cents. Home for 6,278 dollars. Shoulder patching for 2,607 dollars for a total of 266,714,78 cents. Any questions on it?
So we get the two applications of chloride as we always do?
Yes.
All right, then I make a motion to approve a total of 266,714,78 cents for road commission work orders of 2025.
Support. Okay, a motion support to approve the road commission work orders for a price of 266,714,78 cents. Ro call both.
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stowe, yes.
Motion carries. The next one is the assessor contract. Shelley had a two-year contract that's up now. She is asking for, to be paid 3,000, well, to me, for 36,162 dollars annually. That's, that is, that is 2,009 parcels times 18 dollars.
We're at 2,009 parcels from 1850. In the last, oh, I would say, four or five years, we've been hovering at 1850. There's been a tremendous amount of subdivisions and makes more work for her. I would ask you to approve the assessor's contract as required, as requested.
Again, motion support to approve the assessor contract for a cost of 36,162 dollars annually. Okay, we have motion support. Yeah, Shelley is the best in the business and we're lucky to have her. Any other questions? Ro call both.
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Steven, you know, Kaczynski.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stowe, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one, these are a couple invoices from... Okay.
They're for the tabulators.
Yeah.
So we have an annual maintenance, they have to come and do whatever on the machines. So it's, it's for the three, the four machines that we have.
Okay.
So basically, when we got them, we signed a contract that we would do the annual maintenance.
And the cost of that is 1,365 dollars.
I make a motion to pay 1,365 dollars for the township's, for the maintenance of the township's election.
Support.
Okay, a motion support to approve the two invoices for election service for the annual maintenance for township election. Ro call both.
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes. Okay, the next one are a couple invoices. This is when Mr. Tumon represented the township in front of the state tax tribunal. The first one is against a jawat. Second one is for Michigan Meadows for a total cost of 752 dollars and 50 cents.
I make a motion to approve both of the invoices in a total of 752.50. That's all over.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the two invoices from Tumon Lots of Wayland 3 and Strimmers for 752.50. Okay, ro call both.
Anderson, yes.
Daniel.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Stowe, yes.
Here, this is amendment to the fire charges in the general ordinance. The section, the section 15.5 time period of payment. It hits that all four going change, this is current. All four, four going charges shall be due and payable within 90 days from the date the service is rendered. Jennifer thought that was not workable and adjusted it.
Yes, because we don't get the fire reports in a timely manner sometimes. Sometimes three or four months after the fact. So in November, I got invoices from July, August, September. So then when I sent them out, people were calling going, why did I just get this? And I'm like, because I just got it. So I would like to change it so that it says that it's payable within 90 days of when the township receives the fire.
That's more than reasonable, yes. I'll make, we have to, we have to redo this.
We can just change it by our...
Can we, yes.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that then.
Because it's just, it's not a zoning ordinance.
All right.
Yeah, zoning ordinance always starts with a planning commission. We end up agreeing with it.
This is just, yeah.
This is just a general ordinance, yeah.
So we're adjusting section 15.5 of the fire charges chapter to state that the invoice will come not more than 90 days.
No, you do within 90 days.
90 days of when the township is not the buyer.
Yes, that's good.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Is there a motion and support?
Oh.
I make a motion.
Or?
Okay.
Motion support. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we have a resignation from zoning board of appeals from Sandra Bishop.
And like I said, we've already said that she is exiting from the board. She's been a very honest and ethical and thoughtful voice on the zoning board for a long time. And I'm going to be sad to see her go.
She was very good. When I was on the zoning board, I worked with her and she was...
Well, that's five days, very nice.
And we couldn't give them service there, we dropped.
So that's a motion?
I don't have a motion. We accept her resignation with...
Regret.
With regrets and appreciation for the work service on the zoning board.
Very nice.
Okay.
I'll support.
Okay, a motion support to accept the resignation from Sandra Bishop from the zoning board of appeals. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, second, I would like to, I recommend that the board moves Chris Kabaki from zoning board of appeals alternate to a full member of the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
Okay, we have, okay, you made the motion?
I thought somebody did. I'll make the motion for sure. He's usually there, he's thoughtful and tries to participate and can be a good addition.
Yeah. Okay, we have support for that.
We're lucky that way.
Okay.
Who supports? I'll support.
All right, we have motion support to that made, to move Chris Kabaki from the zoning board of appeals alternate to a full member of the zoning board.
He's been off for like a year or two now.
A couple years now.
So he needs to pick him up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So you need to find someone for another alternate.
Yes, I need to, yeah, find an alternate, another alternate for the zoning board of appeals. And everyone for...
Okay, because there's, there's a couple people that have some interest in it. So I'll have to reach out to you.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, back in the fall, we did, we approved the solar roof contract for trying outdoor maintenance. The motion, in the motion, we inadvertently left out the cost of salting the parking lots and sidewalks. We did the annual cost in that, so we just need to approve these two invoices there to approve because the cost of salt went up. And so the total cost is 3,556 dollars and 10 cents.
That includes the seasonal plowing on that first invoice. So what happened was they invoiced us on per push rate for three different times that they came and did snow. And I pulled the contract, the contract and the minutes and we had, Colleen made a motion to approve the seasonal amount and not a per push. We did a per push for the cemetery. So Joe had talked to them, so they fixed it. So that 13, on that first invoice, the 209430 invoice number, that 130560 that's on that invoice right there, we actually technically already approved that part.
Okay.
But it's already part of this one, so I just told them to, we'll just approve the whole invoice total. But going forward for the next few months, we will have to approve their invoices for the salt because we have no, no idea how much, you know, that they're going to use. We don't know if it's going to snow or ice or, you know.
Okay, so I don't know how much a bag of salt is.
It's, it was like, it's crazy amount, but...
So I'm looking at the dates.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if we had that much snow that required that much salt day after day after day.
So what I told Joe, what, what he needs to do, or one of us needs to do, but I'm going to give the job to him. Not that I'm a boss or anything, but we need to, when we call them out or when they come out, it needs to go on a calendar somewhere. So you can write it on the calendar, so then when we get the bills, we could be like, okay, yes, they came up this day, they came up this day. Because right now, it's a lot of salt. I have no idea if they were out here or not.
And they're saying, this is just so, it's out of my wheelhouse here. They're saying it takes half a ton of salt to salt that kind of stuff.
They saw it, that's what they saw.
Salt is very...
And, but it's like, a couple days in a row. It's like, you put a ton of salt and then the next day you're going to come and put another ton of salt.
Well, the first of all, I was...
And it was, 1/6, 1/7, right, 10?
I did tell him though, because we had people dropping off salt to keep that salt. So I did tell them that and...
Which, you need to make sure, you need to make sure it's safe for the residents because it now requires...
It's just, it's just not something I'm really quite...
And two, Saturday, I was talking to a gentleman from another service. He was salting up near Saint James. And I says, how much you lay down? He says, my boss says spread it there. And they do that because of liability issues.
His boss says what?
To put it down heavy.
Yeah, because they're going to charge us for it. The more they throw down, the more they charge us, so. But, you know, you don't want them to skip either, so.
It's been, it's been trash.
Yeah, yeah, because there's been a couple times when we came in and it was icy and we called them to come and then salt it.
And he's been pretty good. He's been like, Sunday, I was here and I forgot to put the trash out. So I came out early yesterday. And the, the lots were covered in that. I come out around like quarter to six yesterday morning. Now the lots were cleared and salted, so he's been doing a pretty good job.
Bag of salt is not as expensive as a lawsuit.
Correct, this is very true. When you're, when you're looking at a ton of rock salt for 140 dollars. Yeah, I guess we can afford that.
Yeah, but of course you have to, I mean, that's why I go.
Last week, Regina and I were at the road commission. They were even saying how much the salt cost went up this year, so.
Well, I guess the old saying is what it is.
So in January, you got over 6,000 pounds of salt on the sidewalks and the cliff.
That's what it looks like.
That's what it looks like through all the school. That's a lot of salt. That's what Jennifer and I were saying all the school, that's a lot of salt. You know, and there's, there's like puddles out there.
Well, and like the first, we didn't, we didn't have them do this part until January because we had to move over here. So that first invoice is out for just that parking lot, that small parking lot.
Just right.
Yeah.
So we touch tomorrow. Thank you, it's not a school, it's true. Can you imagine what that must cost them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So we're going to approve it.
Yeah, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 3,556 dollars and 10 cents for the tri outdoor maintenance.
Tryout.
Trio, it's trio.
Oh, yeah, trio.
Oh, I don't see no. Well, it is right there, okay. Okay, so I make a motion to approve 3,556 dollars and 10 cents for trio outdoor maintenance to salting and, just for salting and side, no, salting and pushing snow on that parking lot and sidewalks.
Do we have support for that?
Yes. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Colleen? Okay. We have a motion support to pay the two invoices for dry outdoor maintenance for three thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and ten cents. Any questions? Are there any of those salts that are expensive? Uh, Rokalbo?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Ches.
And Inte.
Yeah. Motion carries.
I do request that I get a signed copy of the contract because I do have to do that.
Okay. The next one is a pay increase for Brenda Loer. Okay. Okay, Joe, Jennifer, Colleen, Gina, and Dan. I in respect for your request an hourly wage increase to amount of two dollars an hour, twenty-five to twenty-seven dollars per hour effective of April 3rd, 2025. Thank you for your consideration, this man. So... Yeah.
Support.
We have motion support to approve the pay raise for Brenda Loer from a two dollars an hour to twenty-five to twenty-seven dollars an hour effective of April 3rd. I have one thing to say, Brenda does her job very well. She takes care, she looks out for me and helps me with doing my job. Plus she does in the building department and she's the chief clerk there for the planning commission's own board appeals and she does excellent work there.
I appreciate it. I'll tell you.
Okay. Okay, Rokalbo?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Ches.
So please.
Motion carries. Okay. I am L. Pay increase Katie McCullough. Dear Township Board Trustees, I request an hourly pay increase, one dollar fifty cents an hour. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Katie McCullough.
Motion of... Support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the pay increase for Katie McCullough for another, for a dollar fifty. And everything, Katie does her job very well. You're a, that young woman. She was a, she was a twenty-four. She has a lot more wisdom than I do, actually. And she's, she continues to impress me and she's an excellent member of the team here at Casco Township. So, okay, any other questions?
We're going to make it effective April 1st.
Yeah, April 1st. Okay, Rokalbo?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Ches.
So please.
Motion carries. Alright. Okay, K. I mean, M. Pay increase for Linda Teague. Dear Casco Township Board of Officers, we're requesting one thousand five hundred dollar rate raise in salary for our deputy treasurer and successor Linda Teague for the upcoming year. Linda's work ethic and job performance are excellent as well as my all the staff. Thank you. This is signed by Shelley Baumwasser, the successor and holding treasurer.
Make a motion to give Linda the annual pay raise.
Support. Okay, that's starting for the first debate room.
Yes.
Okay. Any, quite, and Linda's another...
That's quite alright.
Yeah. She's good. Okay, Rokalbo?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Ches.
So please.
I'd like to say that we're incredibly fortunate to have the quality of support staff in the north side.
Yes. Everybody helps, everybody asks. There's, nobody has any problems. They jump in and help whatever, whatever department needs help, so...
The weather.
Oil machine. Yes.
Okay.
And wisdom.
Okay, I'd like the board to see, we have a chance to apply for a recreational, you and I recreational passport grant to put a playground down at the park. I put a diagram of what it would look like in front of you. I'd like to see if the board would be interested if we had to bring something for next month for approval that would have cost in that. And recreational passport grant is, we apply and we are accepted.
Have you any answers during that?
No, we just have to look at the budget there for the parks and rep, but it's a seventy-five...
You could match, if you have enough to match.
Right. So, they don't, let's say, let's say it costs fifty thousand and the V and I would end up paying seventy-five percent, the twenty-five percent for the playground. And the playground would be ready off the walkway from the parking lot up there to the pavilion.
How much would we be looking to get?
What's that?
How much would we be looking to potentially be?
Well, the grant, I mean...
But what about, you've got to know what we're going to get so we know what we're going to match.
Right. Yeah, that's, I'll give those prices for next month. Payton told me something like this was roughly cost about sixty-five thousand. So a lot of it has to do with coating and ground, whether it's wood chips or rubber stuff. So...
So we're talking about twenty thousand for the township if we got it. Twenty, thirty thousand at the very most. And sixty thousand from the, or forty thousand from the...
But, yeah. Well, with the board's permission, I could bring some cost for you next month.
They always turn you down.
Yeah.
I never, I don't even, just do it. Let's see what you get.
Alright.
Yeah.
No, just say no if you don't think it's reasonable to do.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Next one is election source replacement of voting tabulators.
Do we need to do any kind of motion on that or anything, or?
Well, I'll just, I'll just bring it to you. I don't think, no, I'll bring up a proposal on costs to them. We do not, one thing about this part, unlike before when we did phase one two, where we had a whole public hearing to approve for a recreational passport grant, they don't have that requirement no more. So it's just going to be a simple blow of the board. Okay. Next one is election source replacement voting tabulators.
I'm taking it off the agenda. Well, when, when the county was here doing that audit, I was telling them about this. And they told me, they heard in 2027, we might have different tabulators. So it doesn't make sense for us. I was, I was thinking, you know, if we could get a thousand dollars off of a new one by turning in our old one because the old ones are very slow and they're outdated, so we do need to get new ones. I was thinking, well, why not? Let's save a thousand dollars. But if in two years they're going to be obsolete, it doesn't make sense to even go there. So we're just going to skip that. We're going to wing it.
But the other equipment that we approved earlier...
What equipment?
No, the invoices for making...
Those are the, they come and do maintenance on the current tabulators.
Okay.
And because when, when we bought those, like, we got two of them last year and we got a grant form, so we didn't really pay for them. We got money, we paid for them, but we got reimbursed for them. But when we bought those, in the contract, we agreed for a yearly maintenance that they would come in, they check the machines, they do any kind of updates that need to be updated. So...
So that's the only thing we're paying for because the other thing we got in reimbursement for, for cost.
Right. Right.
We did.
Yeah. So we'll find out in two years what they're doing.
Gotcha. Alright. Next one, P. High Tech invoice, eight one five five three.
So I just got this today, but I figured we added innocence here in our meeting. This is a renewal for our Microsoft 365, our emails and whatnot, the accounts. It's a yearly, do a yearly thing. So this is just the renewal for it. So...
Alright, then also I think they want to switch us from our email from dot com to dot gov.
We're going to figure out how to do that. They're not going to do that quite yet, but eventually, because our website is now a dot gov, eventually we need to have our emails switched so that it's all one. Because, I mean, I think people trust emails more if they would say dot gov. If our website's a dot gov and then our emails are dot com, people might not think that they're like a legit email.
I've got a question on that. They said, "Why isn't the township like a dot org or a dot gov?"
So we are, our website is a dot gov.
Interesting.
But you can still type in dot com, it takes you to the dot gov, yeah. But I don't know how long it's going to do that.
Okay. Okay.
So I make a motion to pay one thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars to High Tech for their annual agreement. The Microsoft 365. I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion support to pay High Tech invoice, eight one five five three for for one thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. Okay, Rokalbo?
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Ches?
So please.
Says some comments?
Um, oh, so you go...
Motion carries.
Okay. Since the park is off the agenda, where are the benches coming? Do you have them still here?
Yeah. No, they're, they're, they're nice and pull by.
So what's the status with the advisory committee? Have they made any decisions about?
Yeah, we're going to move them out in the springtime. You can't put them, we have to put them together on site at the park. You can't, they're too big to put them and move them. We have to put them together down there.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll do that this spring. We have some ideas where we want to place some along.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, they're, I didn't realize how big they were until when Brian and I moved them.
Oh.
Yeah, they're massive. I don't think we have to worry about people walking off of them.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. So...
That's alright.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Simmons?
Couple months ago, board talked about the sick time act. How does that apply to our township?
Oh, the sick time act?
Do you have a mention of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so by law, and I know in the, I think it's the House, they're trying to change the bill. So right now, the law was passed, so for every thirty hours that an employee works, they get one hour of sick time. No questions asked. Because back in 2018, something happened. They passed, they passed some kind of act or law that, you know, wasn't discussed or whatever. So they're, they're basically taking that off the shelf and doing this now. But I know that it's in the House, maybe the Senate now. I think the House might have cast to repeal it or change it, and I think it's at the Senate now. But as of right now, it's in effect, starts the 21st of February. So for every hour that the hourly employees work, not the salary, but the hourly employees work, it's an hour of sick time. And that is for any company in the state of Michigan that has ten or more employees.
Okay. So as far as employees go, was we considering like Brenda, Jorge, Linda Teague, Katie, all four?
Those three.
But nothing with four?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, those three. So I'll keep a spreadsheet because I don't know how else to keep track of it. And I'm going to have a spreadsheet, and then when I get the time sheets, I'm just going to do it that way. Until maybe the S and A will figure out something to do it easier, I don't know.
Okay.
Thankfully, we only have the three. I had to do too much.
Alright, anything else? Okay.
I have something. Before I forget, it says at the bottom of our page here that the next township board meeting will be held Tuesday, March 11th. It's also the annual meeting. So it's a combination of...
So the citizens should get their tickets early?
Yes. I can be huffing them at the...
Oh, yeah, we have your four, right?
Friday, February 14th is the last day to pay taxes in Casco Township without penalty. Friday is normally, the office is closed. However, if, if you would like, the statute says that the treasurer may be in her office, his office, if there are not other methods by which taxes can be paid. If you have a bank that collects your taxes, that's sufficient. Or a drop box, et cetera, et cetera. I kind of like to be here for panic-stricken people. I don't like them to, I just don't like them to fret. However, in saying that, I'm perfectly willing to work Friday here. But that's going to perhaps give us the cost of having two parking lots shuffled and salted if I am here collecting taxes. That's up to you.
Okay.
Do you want to incur those costs?
This is what I'm going to say about that. If people are coming to the drop box, it should be salted over there anyway.
Yes.
But that doesn't mean that, you know...
Yeah, or here.
But, yeah.
But...
But if there's...
The reason I don't like to, I mean, we have the drop box and it's very reliable and it's very safe and everybody's very good about it. But people have a tendency at the last minute to like lose their tax bills.
No.
And I don't want the checks. And I certainly don't want cash in that box. And as a matter of fact, I don't want cash in this office on Friday. If somebody's bringing their taxes, you bring it in the form of a check. Or if it's cash, you take it to the bank because I will be here a long while.
I mean, to me, probably that's, that's safety out there and it's the last day for tax. That's, to me, it's a given.
The last day to pay taxes in Casco Township is February the 28th. I have to be in my office that day. There is a penalty after the 14th, from the 14th to the 28th, there is a late fee of one percent. But on the 1st of March, all taxes go delinquent to the county. So the 28th is the very last day. You can come in and you better have candy and roses when you do it.
It's Valentine's Day.
Yeah. But the 14th, the 14th is the last day to pay without penalty. And I will gladly be here to accept your needs.
I will notify Brian tomorrow to make sure that he knows that, okay?
Yeah. And please use this back door. It's easier for everyone.
Sure.
And please sign up.
Okay. Any, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple things. So I need a copy of the MTA annual dinner meeting. So if anybody wants to go, there's, there's the agenda on one side and the invitation on the other side. Just let me know.
Yeah.
If you can email me so that I have, when I get back from my vacation, I...
They moved it out a month because always, they had it in February.
It's always snowing.
Always smelling. It's always smelling.
Are two years of that bringing a centerpiece like we used to?
What's that?
Do we have to bring a centerpiece like we used to? No?
Do you?
Wait, I haven't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't cut me off. Okay. Don't cut me off. Okay, um, so the board, and I don't know if the rest of the Richmond School residents received a letter, but I got a letter from the school. They are, um, thinking about doing another bond proposal. So there is three days that the, the superintendent is having a, it's called community conversations. The first date is Tuesday, February 18th, at the Richmond Middle School. The second date is Tuesday, March 18th, at the high school. And the third day is Monday, April 21st, at the elementary school. They all start at 6:30 PM and will be in the building's media centers. So, um, I don't know if anybody would be interested in hearing what they have to say. I will be going to probably the second or the third one, because I would like to find out how, how much money they're spending on the elections to have this, because I don't know if residents are aware of this, but if a school wants to do an election, um, and there's no other election going on, and they, like, say they wanna have one in May or August or November of this year, which they could do one at any time, whatever it costs to run the election, the, they have the election inspectors, the ballots, the postage, anything that has to do with running that election, the school pays for. So Richmond schools has Casco, Columbus, Lenox, Richmond, and Richmond Township. So there's five different jurisdictions and communities that will be running an election. And it can cost, depending on, on how big that school district is in that community, it can cost ten, twelve, twenty thousand, I, I don't know, it depends. So you're talking, that's a lot of extra money. Now, if they could, like, if they would've did it in this last November, it wouldn't have cost anything, because we're already running the election. But when we have to run an election on our own, they pay for it. So I know they're thinking about doing one. I heard East China is thinking about doing one in May, but today was the deadline for May. I haven't heard anything. That doesn't mean that the county didn't get something today. Um, and then they could do it in August or November. And I also heard that Marysville, not that that affects us, but Marysville is also thinking about doing one.
When is the next election?
The, the next scheduled election would be next in August of 2026. That would be the gubernatorial.
Mooters.
Primary, and then, and then in November, yeah. So that's our next schedule. But if they wanna have any school elections, like, before that, then they're paying for it. So, and I don't know what people are there.
That's a lot.
But I think a lot of times they like to do them when the snowbirds are not able to vote. That's my opinion. I don't know if that's true, but, you know, they'd rather pay the extra cost than maybe it'll pass.
Yeah.
But, whatever. But that's, I'm throwing it out. Um, one more thing is I'm expecting to get our reimbursement check for the November early voting center wages from the county, well, it's through the county, but the state's giving us the money. It's about forty-four hundred dollars. So that'll be coming up, hopefully within the next month or so. That's all I got.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the last county commission meeting, we have the election of officers. So the chair, the chairperson is John Sakon. Vice, and I have all these last names, Mike, okay, vice, vice chairperson, Mike Kazinsky, Kazinsky. Secretary Dan Hill, representative to the zoning board of PO's general.
Is that Edwards or Edwards?
Edwards.
Edwards, I know Edwards, yes, Edwards. That's what I know.
Okay.
Okay, and so I just wanted to put that out there in case anybody's interested. Um, and when we were at the, um, road commission meeting, what did they say? I haven't written down, but I didn't bring it. Uh, what did they say about the, the roundabout?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be instructed this year.
Because I thought they said it's gonna be next year.
Uh, no, it will be this year. Next year, they delayed the center of turn lane for Church Road till next year, to 2026.
Okay, okay.
But the roundabout there, we're gonna see highway in the palms, will be this year. One, I think it's the westbound lanes, one will be kept open. Like, eastbound lanes, the, the tour will be on Meisner Road.
For, for the, um, for the church road, for the church road?
No, that's where the marines, the palms, yeah, yeah. So they will, as time gets closer, the road commission will post, um, um, information on that. So it's gonna take, it'll take a couple of months to put that in.
They definitely said palms and not marsh, right?
Falls.
Well, there, there's gonna be one down there too.
Yeah, they're gonna have a roundabout at Marsh and Falls.
Yes.
Yes. And one on St. Clair Highway in Waddams.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that, and that is also Waddams. Isn't there one at Waddams?
St. Clair Highway in Marysville.
This is crazy.
That's Fred Moore, and then they're gonna do St. Clair Highway. Oh, they must have a lot of roundabouts on there.
I guess so.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what they're, when Gina and I were up there, I asked the road commission, road commissioners, are the money that was set aside, okay, that we're gonna be using with, in conjunction with the match grant to, oh, do, do the overlay, St. Clair Highway, the last two miles, we'll do one mile this year, another mile. I said, is that money safe? I mean, we're not in danger of being pulled back to Washington. Because the group now, they're wanting to pull back lots of money. They say that money's earmarked and it's safe, so.
Well, we'll see. Has anyone talked today rushing about our, um, internet, which was supposed to be here at the end of summer, and I have not seen anything yet, our broadband?
Well, they're, um, they're installing it right now in Ira Township.
Yeah, we've been saying that for two years.
Well, they, and, uh, there's a group, um, there's a one, two, three next. They're applying for, I sent a letter of support into them, they're applying for grants to, um, do the, the high speed internet.
Well, what about the D?
The D is also applying for, um, so, yeah. Okay, um, we, okay, we have, right here, we got a thing. Um, St. Clair County Road Commission has summer help. The St. Clair County Road Commission is currently accepting applications for summer help at our various facilities and departments. Example of duties are loan flagging, general maintenance, and providing general assistance to our interior production department. Ideal candidates will be college students eighteen years of age and must possess strong work ethic. We offer a four-day, ten, four-day, ten-hour work schedule, an hourly rate of fifteen dollars. Holdout job description application, available at Central Service Center, located 21 Airport Drive, St. Clair. We're on our website. So that's, um, I just hate to have that posted, so it seems like a great opportunity for a young person, perhaps, you know, to get some exposure and influence career changes. I have one last thing. Um, I, uh, Chrysler is, they're, want to have its employees, we've been off-site for the last almost five years, return to work. Okay, I go out there every Friday, that's no problem. Um, my boss and I, and I checked with my new minister, it's okay that I can do like an afternoon shift with them. I could leave here, I go into Sterling Heights, and I work after, so I'll be here all day on Monday, all day Tuesday, in the mornings, on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Um, they'll be for ten months. I told my boss I plan to retire at the beginning of the year, next year. So I just want, you know, the board to know that. We knew that, that she was gonna happen. I was hoping to retire before that. Okay? All right. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, we're up to adjournment.
I have a motion to adjourn. Support.
Okay, a motion support to adjourn, all clear?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.